Okay. Five. Are we good? Try it now. Does it work? The way it was working, I'd like to be in a room all by myself and that'd be kind of fun, right? 5:15, we're out of our executive session and we'll start with our regular meeting. And Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Harold, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. We do have, um... Roll call, we have Councilmember Quevis gone. If I could get a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Quevis.
Second? We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Quevis. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to have citizen comment period. It's limited to three minutes. We ask you to come up to the mic and, um... And state your name and address for the record. Also, there is going to be a public hearing which we'll have comment on. And also, we're going to do a public comment on our first action item. So if you want to wait for that, if you have something on that, you can do it that way. Who's first to come up? Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Chris Cameron. I live at 1217 Splett in Wenatchee, and I'm here tonight to say thank you. A little over a year ago, you took a courageous vote and voted to ban the use of wild and exotic animals in traveling shows. And I'm sure you've heard by now that that was passed into state law recently as well. And so Cindy Volin and I had an opportunity to testify in favor of the bill remotely, which was an interesting experience. But also, I just want to tell you how proud we were to share your courageous example. And we heard from many people that the decision that you took really helped the bill get over the finish line. And so it's just a real source of pride to be represented by folks like you that are responsive and courageous and compassionate. And I also would like to invite you, day after tomorrow on Saturday at 4 o'clock at Wenatchee Valley Brewing, we're having an informal gathering to celebrate the passage of the state law, and you're all invited. And I know it's the beginning of a three-day weekend, so if you're not able to come, just know that we will be raising a glass in your honor in absentia. So again, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris, and you're treating.
Sure, first round zombie. Thank you.
Thanks for being positive tonight. Appreciate that. Who else? Come on up, sir.
Bernie Kofler, 638 Meadows Drive. I have in front of me here this order of revocation of permit on the lighthouse building issued, um... Looks like May 12 of this year by Glenn D. DeVries, Devies. Not sure how to pronounce the name. So it was given to me in the form of a PDF on my mobile, and I could not find it on the website. I spent 20 minutes in the city's website trying to find this. I have no idea, and I'm not that illiterate on being able to navigate, but nowhere, and Google couldn't find it anywhere, nothing, which kind of upset me because I'd like to have had the whole thing to read very closely. This order really, really upsets me. I was with the lighthouse as the dentist director for many years. I was there when the building was being renovated. Heavily participated, boved time, effort, and money to make the clinic part of it happen. And every complaint that is listed on here has been part of the process since day one. Everything that is mentioned here has been there and has been done the way this complaint says from the first day. And here we are nearly, what, eight years later, suddenly the city gets very, very concerned about things that have been going on for years and says, "We need to shut you down completely." That really concerns me because this community needs the lighthouse. And if the lighthouse is shut down, there's going to be ramifications throughout the community that are going to be consequential and in the long term are going to hurt us. Now, I don't know what the city council can do about this, but I think this needs to be addressed by the council to ask why, why does the city think that the lighthouse building needs to be shut down completely? So I hope you guys will take a chance to read this notice and figure out what is being thought and why the city thinks this needs to happen.
Thank you, sir. If you could get your email so we can get you, uh, get you every, whatever the document is, we'll get you everything to you. Or did you end up getting the whole document?
No, I went to the community development and she never heard of this, had no idea where to find it.
Okay, so we'll get that to you. Do you mind writing your email over here to this gentleman here? And we'll get that, uh, we'll get that sent to you.
I thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Seeing no other takers, we'll go to our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve the agenda vouchers amended from previous meetings to accept the work completed by the contractor Central Washington Asphalt for the 2023 pavement preservation project, City Project Number 2203, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher on behalf of the city of Wenatchee to accept the work performed by contractor Hurst Construction LLC for the North Wenatchee Water Quality Project, City Project Number 2204, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher to accept the work completed by contractor Central Washington Asphalt for the 2024 pavement preservation project, City Project Number 2301, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher to accept work completed by contractor KRCI for the Worthing Street Trail Improvement Project, City Project Number 2302, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final, uh, contract voucher, and approve resolution number 2025-14, designate three council members, Linda Harold, Charlie Atkinson, Myra Navarro Gomez as act, as voting representatives on the behalf of the city of Wenatchee at the Association of Washington Cities Annual Business Meeting and Conference for 2025.
Second?
The motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Roganastian for City Council to approve the agenda vouchers amended from previous meeting to accept the work completed by the contractor Central Washington Asphalt for the 2023 pavement preservation project, City Project Number 2203, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher on behalf of the city of Wenatchee to accept the work performed by the contractor Hurst Construction Limited Liability Corporation for the North Wenatchee Water Quality Project, City Project Number 2204, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher to accept the work completed by the contractor Central Washington Asphalt for the 2024 pavement preservation project, City Project 2301, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher to accept the work completed by the contractor KRCI for the Worthing Street Trail Improvement Projects, City Project Number 2302, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher and approve resolution number 2025-14, designating three city council members, Councilmember Harold, Councilmember Atkinson, Councilmember Navarro Gomez as voting representatives on behalf of the city of Wenatchee at the Association of Washington Cities Annual Business Meetings and Conference for 2025.
Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple of presentations. Who has the Memorial Day proclamation?
I do.
Great.
Your Honor, we'd like to present the proclamation for Memorial Day. Whereas since the inception of our country by the establishment of the United States Constitution, it has on occasion been necessary to protect the concepts of the Constitution. And whereas at times it became necessary to resort to the armed conflict to protect these concepts, which gave each citizen of the United States certain inalienable rights. And whereas citizens of our great country have given of their lives in the protection of these unalienable rights. And whereas each year we set aside one day to which we can revive the memory of those who have sacrificed and those who have passed on. Now, therefore, I am Mike Poyer, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee. Do hereby proclaim May 26, 2025, as Memorial Day in the city of Wenatchee, and I urge all citizens to join us in honoring their memory in witness whereof I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 22nd day of May, 2025. Signed, Mayor Mike Poyer.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro Gomez. We have nobody to accept it here, but what's going to happen on Monday, we go to the cemetery, be at the cemetery, and I'll be reading the proclamation there also. So, and then we'll get this off to the appropriate people. So, thank you. We have Ride Transit Month. All right, thank you.
I have a mayoral proclamation declaring June as Ride Transit Month. Whereas public transportation plays a vital role in connecting people to jobs, schools, healthcare, and essential services, ensuring that all members of our community have access to opportunity. And whereas riding transit helps reduce traffic congestion, lowers greenhouse gas emissions, and contributes to a cleaner, more sustainable environment. And whereas the link transit system is powered by dedicated drivers, operators, maintenance staff, and planners who work tirelessly to keep our community moving safely and efficiently. And whereas increasing transit ridership supports economic development, fosters equitable access, and strengthens the social fabric of our neighborhoods. And whereas the month of June marks the start of summer, a perfect time to encourage residents to try transit for commuting, recreation, and daily travel. And whereas Ride Transit Month offers an opportunity to celebrate public transit, recognize its benefits, and invite our community to explore new ways of getting around. Now, therefore, I, Mike Poyer, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Ride Transit Month in the city of Wenatchee. And I encourage all residents, businesses, and visitors to support and participate in this initiative by choosing transit and celebrating its many benefits for our community and our future. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed this 22nd day of May, 2025. Mike Poyer, Mayor of Wenatchee.
Thank you, Councilmember Atkinson. I know ridership is up, so we're going to go over here, take a picture. There's people that come to our video, so no pressure. No matter what you say, it actually will get out to the community. So come on up there. Tell us a little bit how ridership's going and...
Ridership is, is, is growing. Since March of 2024, we've been over 100,000 boardings a month for every month except for February of this year. I think in April, we set a record, 111,000 boardings for the month, which we'd love to see those numbers over 100,000 consistently. So, yeah, things are doing good, and we appreciate the support from everybody. And get on the bus during the month of June and check it out if you already have it, so.
How about electric? Talk this about a little bit.
Electric, we have 23 electric buses in our fleet, and sometime later, oh, I think June, July, Travis may be able to expand on this a little bit because he's a little bit more in the know. We have nine more buses that we've just taken delivery of, but we're waiting for some, some charging infrastructure to be completed before those will be able to be in service. Then we have, I think, four more on order that'll be delivered sometime in 2026. So that'll put us upwards of almost 40 electric buses by next year, which is about 75% or so of our full-size fleet. So electric makes sense for us here in the valley. As we all know, low power rates are a key to that whole thing working, and we certainly have them here, so.
We expanded some, you expanded some service.
We've expanded service quite a bit in the last several years. I think we've added about 40% more hours. Couple of years ago, we did a big system redesign, I think, July of 2022. So we're about, almost three years into that. We have a little more service rolling out here this fall. We are going to start providing service to Pingborn Airport in October. So hopefully that'll address some needs there, as well as revising a couple of the routes in the east Wenatchee area. Wenatchee's pretty well set, but we're trying to kind of fill in the gaps where we're still missing a little bit of service kind of in the, in the corners of our area. So look for a few additional changes probably coming up in 2026.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, appreciate it. Say hi to your mom. Go on to our action items. Our first action item is also a public comment period. Again, three minutes, and if you would like to talk about that, come on up. Anybody on the line tonight? Okay, I guess I'll close public comment. So we'll go to our action item. Do we have somebody presenting? Are we...
No, Mayor, I was going to mention staff did not prepare a presentation. We were directed to put this on the agenda, so it's really up to the council to have conversation and discussion and decide on a motion.
Okay, that's great.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve Resolution 2025-15 for the city of Wenatchee, Washington endorsing and expressing support for the passage of Proposition Number One, which is entitled Sales and Use Tax for Transportation Improvement Program, and encouraging voters to vote yes on the proclamation at the primary and special election to be held on August 5, 2025.
Second?
The motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Uer for City Council to approve Resolution Number 2025-15 of the city of Wenatchee, Washington endorsing and expressing support for the passage of Proposition Number One, which is entitled Sales and Use Tax for Transportation Improvement Program, and encouraging voters to vote yes on the proposition at the primary and special election to be held on August 5, 2025. How about some comments?
Yeah, I have one. Um, so I take raises taxes pretty seriously. I do not like it. But what I like less than paying a little more on my sales tax is our roads falling apart and our cars being damaged and our sidewalk's not working. So this is a hard decision for me, but I think this is the most equitable and financially, smallest financial burden on our citizens with the greatest improvement.
I'd second that. Thank you, Travis.
Everything that Travis has said. Sorry to cut you off.
It's okay.
And I think it's, if not the primary way that people interact with what we do, it's certainly right at the top when they drive on the roads. And I guess I just want to, I mean, we adopted this focused on pavement preservation, and we'll be able to see that in the budgets and the monthly reports and all that. So I feel good about the fact that we have a focus for this, granted that the measure itself, the money can be used for anything related to streets and infrastructure. But I think we're on record as that's why we're doing this, and I think that's important.
Transparency.
I have to agree with both of you. It's not something that we like to do, and, but this puts us in the hands of the voters and allows them to make that decision. And I hope that they will vote yes on this, just simply because it's just, our streets are a mess and we need to take care of them. And they're only going to get worse over time if we don't start doing the preservation now, so.
I agree, and I want to thank staff for educating me and all the presentations you've done to, and all the options and us, you know, this, I think, is, is, uh, yeah, it's, well, we chose as the best option, but just... Yeah, there's a lot that goes into it, and it's really, like Linda said, like, it's only going to get worse. So just thank you for, for kind of, yeah, doing what you do as well. Thank you.
Yes, the, I'll second that one, too. The presentations were extremely helpful. It's a hard thing to do, to discuss raising taxes, but it's the right thing to do in this instance, and I feel confident saying that after learning from staff about the different options that we had available to us and the focus in which we need to really provide in this area. So that was very, very helpful in us making a decision.
And I think we can all dare to say that we drive these roads every day. And all it takes is look up at our, I would encourage people to look at our website. If you were not present or able to see the different presentations, I think that it would be really helpful for you to make a more educated decision once you see what that percentile number was and where we are as a city in our different areas. So I would encourage you to go on there and look at our, look at those pictures that were presented by the city. Look at those numbers because really the data tells it all. So, thank you all.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. City Administrator?
Your Honor, I'll recuse myself from this motion.
Good evening, City Council. Laura Gloria, City Administrator. The item before you, it's actually two different actions, but they support each other, so I brought it in one action. It's specific to Pibis Market Charitable Foundation and our land lease and real estate matters with them. Late last year, Pibis came to the city of Wenatchee requesting some additional changes to their existing option to purchase. So as you may know, Pibis, the building, is owned by the Pibis Market Charitable Foundation. The land underneath Pibis is owned by the city of Wenatchee. Pibis has an option to purchase that land, which was good through 2027. They requested an extension on that. The proposed documents extend that through December 31 of 2035. I will also note that they, there's another document that's not in here. It's the land lease, which we also have a contractual agreement with Pibis that's through 2067. So Pibis will be there at least till 20, through 2067. Whether they own the land or not is what we're talking today, about today. So that's sort of the first half, which is, again, the land beneath Pibis and providing a longer opportunity for them to, to, to use the offer to, or the option to purchase that land beneath them. The second is for the, the lot south of Pibis, which is currently parking. The city of Wenatchee also owns those lots. We had a month-to-month lease with Pibis, and they have requested a longer-term lease so they can go ahead and plan for operations. So we sort of aligned both the option to purchase and the parking lease for 10 years, so starting now, if approved, through 2035. Again, they both are impacting different parcels, but it felt, it felt necessary to sort of put them together since they deeply impact operations, depending on what happens with one or another. Other than that, the other maintenance responsibilities, who does what, all of that stays the same. It's really just the extension of the option to purchase and then the, the 10-year lease to kind of match that timeline. So happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Your Honor, I will move for City Council to approve the first amended and restated vacant land lease and memorandum to first amended and restated option to purchase between the city of Wenatchee and Pibis Market Charitable Foundation and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember Uer for City Council to approve the first amended and restated vacant land lease and memorandum to first amended and restated option to purchase between the city of Wenatchee and Pibis Market Charitable Foundation, authorize the mayor's signature.
Any other discussion or comments? Thank you for working with Pibis and going through the process. I know it's been six months, maybe longer. So thanks for doing that.
Of course.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And remember, Councilmember Hornby recused himself. Okay, motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Next one?
I have the next one, if you're ready.
Yes, yes.
Okay. The next item in front of you is...
That phone messed me up. That was over here, so I was, I got distracted.
I'm on call.
Yes, no problem. So the next item is Resolution Number 2025-13 regarding the amended and restated Chelan Douglas Transportation Council Governance Agreement. So the city of Wenatchee is a member of the local transportation council. The mayor is the city's representative person on that board. There has been a agreement for quite some time, and it has expired this year. It expired actually in March of 2025. At the last board or council meetings, Transportation Council meetings, there was discussion to go ahead and renew that, that agreement. Most of the terms of the conditions of the agreement have also stayed the same. The big change was the, A, the extension for 10 years, and then it also changed how it renews. It will renew in perpetuity until it is terminated. You can, the city of Wenatchee can either withdraw as its own agency if decides it no longer wants to participate, and/or the agreement itself can be terminated with the majority of the members. So a couple of different options there to, to leave if that were the case at some point in time. However, through the Chelan Douglas Transportation Council, we do do that kind of regional transportation planning that's pretty necessary, so. But again, that option is there if, if, if needed. So happy to answer any of the questions that you may have, but again, really, this just extends the ongoing relationship.
Laura, probably a dumb question, but what about alternative alternates or the mayor's on vacation? Someone else he's assigned, does it cover that, too?
I think we do that here at the council level. So if the, you know, if there was an alternate to be appointed, we could do that through the boards and commissions resolution.
Okay, thanks.
I think Councilmember Quevis is on, if I'm absent.
As your alternate?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
This just outlines who gets what voting powers.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a great thing to do. What, what are our dues? Do you know what, I mean?
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask that question. I did not find it.
And I meant to ask it earlier. I apologize for waiting until now. Brad's going to look it up and tell us. I was just curious, it's all, so doesn't change now.
I'll get back to you on that one.
Hey, thank you, appreciate that.
I actually wrote it down, and I didn't have the chance to find it because I was, as the, as the larger cities, we pay dues, and the smaller cities don't.
Right, and I, and it wasn't in the document, that's what I know.
We'll get that to you.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve Resolution Number 2025-13 approving the amended and restated Chelan Douglas Transportation Council Governance Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second?
The motion by Councilmember Roganastian and second by Councilmember Atkinson for City Council to approve Resolution Number 2025-13 approving the amended and restated Chelan Douglas Transportation Council Governance Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
This, this helps us with the bigger projects, so that's the whole theory why we joined this. So then we can go have, go get more for our region, and it's really paid off. I just want to make that comment on there. Any other discussion?
Brad's got a number.
Brad's got a number.
19,000.
19, okay.
Thanks, Pat.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Mr. Sharma, I think you're up. Mr. Sharma, I think you're up.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. My name is Harris Sharma. I'm a project engineer with the City of Wenatchee. I'm here to talk about Ninth Street Corridor Improvement. It is a consultant supplement agreement. Action requested, most for the City Council to amend the project budget and also to authorize the city administrator to sign the Transportation Improvement Board Consultant Supplemental Agreement with Perit Inc. to provide additional design services for the city project 2407 Ninth Street Corridor Improvements. Overview, this project was initially started in 2019 at, at Highway Safety Improvement Program, HSIP. Grant was, uh, grant was given to complete traffic and multimodal analysis for the Ninth Street Corridor from BNSF roller tracks to North Miller Street. And moving on, we also got TIB funding for the project itself. And during that study, 30% of the work was done. And it got to 60%, and during 60% review, planned review, we identified additional needs on additional right-of-way electrical upgrade for signals and illumination, as well as modification to the curb radius, curb ramps and sidewalks at the southeast corner of Ninth Street and North Mission Street. So, and some of these enhancements are essential for the proper functioning of the corridor. And there are a couple items that are not essential, so in this presentation, on the fiscal part of it, it is presented as best bid amount of $280,000 and 205,200 for alternate bid. The engineering cost, engineering and right-of-way services cost together is 171,369, of which 101,722 is allocated for right, right-of-way valuation and acquisition services. These items were identified at 60%, therefore, we had no idea that this is gonna come as a cost at the time. So in, on the budget side of things, we just presented the best bid and the engineering cost in the amount of it's 479,163 is what comes to my mind. I don't have my budget sheet in front of me, but if you could go take a look at that, that's, that's the amended amount that I'm requesting. And this is my opinion that what is in, what is required for the functioning of the corridor itself, I think we could request TIB for additional funding because it relates to that, but the ones on the alternate bid, we probably won't be able to get that from TIB. But that's, that's our plan is to go request for additional fund. Any questions?
And this was brought up at finance today, so some of us were and I might get this wrong, I'm getting them confused, but if we don't get certain amount, then we're not gonna do one of the things on here. Can you help me?
Yes, the best bid, with, with the approval of this, we will be able to do the best bid portion of it, which is 200, let me go back and take a look at this. It is $280,000 is for the best bid amount, that, that's the amount that is needed to make the corridor functional. But 205,200 on the alternate bid, that could wait till we, I don't get additional money. And because the design will be done, it is just to go get the funding part if we're looking for funds at the time.
So, out of curiosity, so let's say it's the TIB, and then later on, if, if we, it's functioning, I love that word, it's functioning, and then later on, you can go apply for the additional down the road?
Yeah, other sources of funding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to amend the project budget and also authorize the city administrator to sign Transportation Improvement Board TIB Consultant Supplement Agreement with Per- Perit? Inc. to improve additional design services for the city project 2407 Ninth Street Corridor Improvements.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Harold for City Council to amend the project budget and also to authorize city administrator to sign the Transportation Improvement Board Consultant Supplement Agreement with Perit Incorporated to provide additional design services for city project 2407 Ninth Street Corridor Improvements.
Any other discussion or comments?
Can you make it happen in '25?
Yeah, it's 2026.
Okay, no pressure, Eric.
It's needed now.
Yes, certainly, yes.
Like, the electrical lights improvements, does that have to do with, kinda like, how, was it a year or two ago when, when a, when a truck hit the-
Yes.
The signal, so we're, so that's gonna help fix that problem?
Yes, that, it will also change, will fix that radius, you know, that curve is so tight.
Yeah.
And people are not able to navigate that. This includes that also. Yeah, it got knocked over and, yeah, we got temporary stuff going on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
You were confident.
Mic drop.
Mr. Harmon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk about our South End Bike Pit Access Bridges Project. As you're well aware, it's underway, and we actually today poured concrete for a bridge abutment on the East Wenatchee side, so it's really starting to elevate, which is great to see. And, yeah, it, it makes it more exciting to really get a big, a better picture of what it's gonna be looking like. Actually, moving to the Wenatchee side for this action item today. In order to complete the work, we're gonna have to do some relocation of the Wenatchee Reclamation District's main line pipe, this being the large steel pipe that goes up and over the, the bridge. All of this work is isolated to the west side, so before getting over the railroad tracks, where we've got our helical ramp heading down. In, in order to complete the work, we needed to execute this construction agreement with the Reclamation District, highlighting that we're able to do the relocation work, capturing some of the, the warranty associated with that work for them on their behalf. And it just captures the, the different processes along the way. This was reviewed by our city attorney and their staff, and with that, I would open it to any questions.
Your Honor, I will move for City Council to authorize the city administrator to execute a construction agreement with the Wenatchee Reclamation District for work associated with city project number 2201.2, the South End Bike Pedestrian Access Bridges Project.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember Navara Gomez for City Council to authorize city administrator to execute a construction agreement with the Wenatchee Reclamation District for work associated with city project number 2201.2, the South End Bike Pedestrian Access Bridge Project.
Any other comments or discussion?
It is really exciting.
Yeah, it's very exciting. This is just going to make pedestrian traffic so much easier and the whole area connected much more.
It's fun to watch the work start happening over there. The excavation's been fun to, to witness, so it's pretty neat to see it actually happening.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Austin, while he's making his way up here, I'll make a quick introduction. I had the pleasure of making the introduction at Finance Committee this afternoon as well, but Austin Slaybaugh, he is a staff engineer for the City of Wenatchee. He started about four and a half years ago as an engineering technician for us, and on the side, he's been continuing his professional development. He, a couple of years ago, took the Fundamentals of Engineering exam, passed, which allowed him to become an engineer in training and get his EIT certificate through the state of Washington. He, this last March, went and took the Professional Engineering Exam and passed on the first try, which is an incredible accomplishment, so he's become a registered professional engineer in the state of Washington.
Very cool. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And so with that continued professional development on his end, he's able to, to endeavor in trying moving further along in projects, and he's really taken this project and made it his. And so before handing it off to talk about this Phase One of First Street, I did want to give a little bit of a background where the project came from. So First Street, in partnership with the Community Development Department, our public work staff kinda identified First Street as a, a great use of our CDBG funds, particularly in response to the, the pedestrian barriers, because there is not curb ramps. It's kinda highlighted in these pictures here. And so due to the population kinda statistics in this area, this is a great corridor that would allow for us to use these CDBG funds. And ultimately, we're planning improvements all the way from Mission to Miller Street at all these curb ramps and through the intersections as well. Phase One came out due to budget restrictions. We are gonna hear a little bit more about the CDBG funds later today and the annual allotments associated with it, but this is one of those mechanisms. We had a few allotments that piled together, allowing us to hit these three intersections, and we have a plan to kinda capture the rest of the work. But with that, I'll hand it over to Austin to talk about this Phase One project and the request for award.
Cool. So, yeah, as you heard, my name is Austin Slaybaugh. I'm a staff engineer here, so for you today, we have the action item related to city project 2408, the First Street Curbs Ramp Phase One. And we're looking to award this, this project to our lowest responsive bidder and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents. So this project is going to be installing on three of the six traffic circles. New curb ramps, stormwater, and overall grading the intersection, making it a lot easier to navigate for bicycles and vehicles alike. So bids went out, or we got bids back last week. We got six people, or six companies that were interested. The lowest responsive bidder was Rudnick and Sons Escavation. They came in at 549,631,000, which was 71,000 below our engineer's estimate of $621,537.40. Yeah, that's, it's about the project. I have a couple of drawings to show regarding what it's going to be looking like, so I guess go back to here, so. Where beforehand, we have a bunch of curb ramps that are non-existent in these areas and a lot of potholes and everything. The plan is to go through and create new curb ramps along either side, so we're gonna be beautifying it with some more pigmented cement concrete or red concrete, kind of like our other red traffic circles that we have in here, and just make it, make it easier to navigate, so, yeah. Are there any more questions?
Sure, I'm just curious, cuz it came out less than your projected amount. How many bids, bids did you guys get?
We got six bids.
Six.
Yeah, Austin's engineer's estimate was at 620,000. We did have a couple right there at the estimate with Rudnick and Sons coming in underneath. Fun fact, they were the contractors to install the traffic circles when they first went in as well, so. But, yeah. I jumped in prior to your question there, so.
No, no, I, I, it just seems like, right now, it's, it's some good bidding out there. It seems like some people need some projects. I think some projects fell, fell through, through federal, and I think that's why we're getting some favorable bids.
Agreed, yes.
You mentioned earlier that the circumference or diameter of the circle in the center would all be math, right? Would all be equitable across that road. With these people, Rudnick and Sons, being the ones who did it for us earlier, is there a reason why it was not asymmetrical at each point?
I'll jump in here as, to, to answer the question. A part of the, the locations of the center islands as they are now is to correspond with the, the utility lids that are in the, in there. Because we were limited to, to providing that bicycle benefit and slow, traffic calming benefit there, we weren't able to relocate those utilities, and so a lot, or there were some reconfiguration of where that center island landed just to accommodate some of those manhole lids and different utility boxes at the top.
So that accounted for the difference that you mentioned earlier?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a great project. There's many, people live in that area that are handicapped and only can get around with a wheelchair. This will solve many of those problems. It's been an issue in 1928, when a lot of those sidewalks were put in, the ramps were not required, so getting it up to code is, well, just about right timing. So I appreciate this project.
Ninety-seven years later, is that what you're saying?
That's about right timing.
So with that, I will make a motion for City Council to award construction contract to the First Streak curb ramp Phase One project, city project 2408.1, to the lowest responsive bidder and authorize city administrator to sign the contract docs.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Atkinson for City Council to award the construction contract for the First Streak Curb Ramp Phase One project, city project number 2408.1, to the lowest responsible bidder and authorize city administrator to sign the contract documents. Any other discussion or comments?
Thank you for all your hard work on this.
No problem, happy to do it.
Great first presentation.
Thank you.
And congratulations again.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hi, Darcy.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Darcy Ronnie, utility planner for the City of Wenatchee. I'm here tonight on the subject of our Ninth Street Stormwater retrofit project, which was recently completed. Tonight, my ask of, is a little different than my usual ask. I'm here tonight to close out the loan and deobligate funding that we did not use. As a reminder on the project, it was a Department of Ecology Stormwater Financial Assistance Program grant. Part of the project was also a loan. When we were installing the stormwater, we installed stormwater in the street, but we also installed some pipe in the open ditches known as the Number Two Canyon Drain that was a problem. It was the what was causing flooding in the, like, Ringgold and Seventh area, and so we felt it was a very important part of the project. Unfortunately, it doesn't meet the conditions of water quality for the grant, and so they didn't wanna fund it through grant funds, but they did say they would give us a very low favorable loan to do that work. So at the time, we accepted, and that agreement came before you. Our contractor did a great job, stayed within budget, had no change orders, and therefore did not spend all the money that was allocated to us. So Department of Ecology has an official process for that, and they have given us an agreement that they're asking for the city administrator's approval to sign to deobligate that funding in the tune of $5,095,068.42. True to Ecology's nature, it's complicated and messy how that is refunded, but there is on page four, a breakdown of how they do that, what they're funding back specifically as far as the loan is concerned. For the loan, it's being reduced by $53,379.12. Loan number two, which is the canyon drain portion, sorry, the other portion was for the match to the grant. The first loan was our match. The second loan is the canyon drain work that we did. It's remaining the same, but the bulk of the deoblig- The bulk of the de-obligation was for the grant funding itself to reduce it by 541,689 dollars and 30 cents with this permission. And then down below is another breakdown of tasks. That's at Ecology standard on how tasks are created and how we bill against each task for construction management, administrative time, environmental, cultural resources. They have a breakdown which we bill against. So then they provided a task by task breakdown as well. But the, the bottom line is that we are not utilizing 595,000 dollars. And that will go back into the stormwater grant funds for another recipient, maybe us again, to apply for and do another project. I would entertain any questions if you have them on that.
Great news. I like the word de-obligation. Get some money back.
I wish we could just slide it over to the next one, but it doesn't work like that.
Any questions for Darcy?
No.
No?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the loan closeout and de-obligation amendment for city project number 2101, Ninth Street Stormwater Retrofit Project, and authorize the city administrator to sign the amended and loan closeout documents.
Second. We have a motion by council member Ueher and second by council member Hornby for city council to approve the loan closeout and de-obligation amendment for city project number 2101, Ninth Street Stormwater Retrofit Project, and authorize city administrator to sign the amendment and loan closeout documents. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. At this time, we have a public hearing, so we're going to hear from our staff. And then we'll turn it over to the public for any comments after that. So who's Mr. DeVries?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director. So we are an entitlement community for community development block grants. And that comes, flows through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And in receipt of those funds, every five years, we have to do a strategic plan. It's called a consolidated plan. And then every year, we do an annual action plan, which is essentially, how are we going to spend the money that year? But the five-year plan, essentially, we're looking for feedback from the council tonight, verifying the ongoing focus on improvements like the ones that you've heard from Ryan and Austin this evening. That was a great project because we had a number of years we could pull together. The projects won't always be that large or that flashy, but it's the same focus, looking at needs for low and moderate income persons and focusing on the pedestrian and accessibility improvements. There's a needs assessment that was probably rather difficult to read. And attached this, that's a requirement of this process. The source of that data is really from our comprehensive plan process. There's also data in there from other sources as well. But it's not telling us anything we don't know and that we're not looking at through our comprehensive plan. We know that there are significant needs for low to moderate income households in our community. And we're looking at strategies and action items for that through our comprehensive plan process. So really, we're, we're required to have that, that component. Our consultant put that CAN program together. Really, we try to limit as much as possible the amount of time we're spending on these steps because you could spend a considerable amount of time. And what that does is then there's less dollars to spend on the projects. So we're trying, one of the things that our HUD rep has told us and our consultant has told us is do the same thing every year. Be very focused and be very efficient and just repeat it every time. And in that way, you're decreasing the dollars spent on administration and you're able to spend more on the projects because the amount of steps required to do these projects through the federal requirements are considerable. The reason we're successful this, with this program is because we have talented folks in our public works department that work on federal dollars and federal grants. And what that does for us is it creates a great partnership. We can do the planning efforts. We can develop the plans, the notices. But really, it works because they're familiar with how to document. And, and then we do the payments, that type of thing. So really, what we're looking for tonight is, is the city council comfortable with the ongoing effort at focusing our funds to these pedestrian and accessibility improvements? Or do you have a redirection? This is the first hearing this, this evening. We'll take any public testimony. But simply, it's a consent item. Are you, are you okay with that continued focus? And then what you'll have is the final public hearing this summer that would then review that final plan for your consideration and approval going forward. But happy to answer. Any questions now or after public testimony?
How long we been doing this?
I am not too sure. Since the time of David Stallheim, which is probably early 2000s would be my guess, prior to my time.
You might have said, how much money is this?
So it changes every year. Let me grab something.
Sorry. I guess how much money and how much work does it take?
A lot of work. And that's something we have to monitor. And last year, we received our annual provision was 308,000. This year, it's 234,918 dollars. That's more along the line of what we used to get back in 2020. We'll have to watch this over time because if it continues to decrease at some, a certain point, there'll be a, a point where it's, with the amount of time that it's required, it won't be worth our time because we have to pay a consultant. And then there's all the time that Public Works has to submit materials and documentation. So we'll have to see going forward. But at this time, and we'll be looking for feedback with the new 234,000 to make sure that Public Works, really, we can, we as staff can continue to go on as long as the Public Works team says they can find viable projects with the amount of dollars that are available.
How long can you, can you accumulate money before you have to spend it? How does that work?
There is a certain timeframe to do that. And then there's our provisions on when you have to have it spent. So you can do some pooling, but it's very limited. We were actually, we had a considerable pool of money this time, but that's because we were out of compliance on, and needed to do a spend down and had to do an action plan to get that spent, and they approved it. Forgive me, I think it might be two cycles. But there is, it's very strict on how that's set up.
And, and have there been any other competing interests besides this focus on mobility and?
So we did do a talk with other partners that historically have accessed these funds and let them know about this process. The challenge is this, if we went to the past practices of dispersing these funds to different folks, we would recommend that you don't do the program because we don't have the staff to do the steps. You'd need to hire someone full-time to do it. And then at that point, with 234,000 dollars, you're really not, it's not worth the time. That's why this, the partnership with Public Works on this is, works really well.
Yeah, the last time we reviewed it, almost everything else, the administration piece of it was two, two tenths.
Yeah, that makes sense. And there's a lot of needs out there. And I'm not trying to discount that in any way. It's just, this is a way, and this really is recommended by the federal government and our consultants. You really want to be focused.
You guys have done great work with the funds and done projects that wouldn't have been addressed anytime sooner. So I encourage you to keep doing that direction unless there's any additional feedback.
I agree.
I think at least monitor it.
Definitely. I totally agree. We're going to have to monitor because we'll have to see this year if Public Works sees that the amount of funds are usable and it makes sense for them. And then we'll have to watch if it continues to decline.
Any other questions for Glenn? If not, I'll turn it over to public comment with only talking about the Community Development Block Grant. Do we have anybody that would like to come up regarding that? Seeing none. Do I just end the public hearing or how's that work? Just, yeah, I guess our public hearing's done. We'll go to reports. Hey, we're almost out of here. Thank you, council member Harold, for letting me go to the Washington State Fire, Fire Association of the Board and the opening ceremonies. And it's all exciting because at 1:30 that day, they signed contracts for three more years.
Well, actually, they're contracted through 2029.
Yeah.
So.
So that was, that was a great, I, I enjoy doing those type of things. I want to encourage, if I can have any kind of influence at all, to continue.
Don't worry. We'll take you up on that.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that was exciting, a great thing. Mr. Rockholder, you can talk a little bit about the barbecue, maybe, and would you mind doing that?
No, no, no. Thank you, Mayor Poirier. We had our Public Works Week barbecued on Tuesday, and we had a really good showing. Shout out to all the other departments, not just Public Works, who came out and participated. We had an amateur equipment rodeo division and a professional. So we had one of our temporaries in water, second day on the job, take the title for the amateur equipment rodeo. And Nick Schaefer took the championship for the first place in our professional rodeo. He's on our street maintenance crew. But no, well attended. Aaron Kelly and I grilled. Mayor Poirier was there in support. Laura was there in support. So in fact, I think Laura and Mayor Poirier both operated equipment. They were both in the loader, I believe. So it was pretty cool to see. So, yeah, it was a great time. Thank you.
And the cones that got smashed goes under Laura's budget next year, $22. But I'm the one that smashed it, but we'll put it on.
We, we'll be able to refurbish them. Don't worry.
It is a season to go see schools this time of the year, which is kind of nice. I went to Cascade Christian Academy and talked to the senior class there, what's going on with the city. Pentacles Prep came here, seventh grade, maybe 25 kids or something like that. So if you hear of schools that want to reach out and want to invite city council or myself to come, if they've done a little research, then I think that's very important to give back. And that's pretty much it for me. Just go down the line if that's all right.
So we had our first Legislative Priority Committee meeting of the year. Our next one will be at the annual convention. And there was a lot of talk about things that didn't pass. The gas tax was passed. Cities will get 2.5% of the gas tax, which is good. Or no, it did not pass. Excuse me, it didn't pass. And the retail delivery fee is highly opposed by some big, big box brands. So it didn't get passed. This, Jay Bernie with the city of Olympia made a comment that cities need the option to pass more things councilmatically. I don't know if I necessarily agree with that because I think it's always good to go to the voters. But some of the smaller cities need these options just because they cannot, they're, they cannot keep up with the needs of their citizens. Yakima reported that they're going to have a significant deficit for 2026 and many other cities said the same thing because revenues are down. And 2026, things that will be considered, we're still looking at the retail delivery fee, if they can get it passed. Homelessness is still on the agenda. Housing, primarily affordable housing, is huge. There was a lot of discussion about this and there will be a lot of emphasis on it. The other thing that some cities, and I know Wenatchee's right up the alley, is that they're, they're lacking space for affordable housing. There's just no place to build it because they're running out of space. The governor is looking at cost savings and where we can reduce expenses, which is, I think, very good because I walk the streets of Olympia a lot and I see a lot of waste, in my opinion. Support of infrastructure was very important. They want to see more tax benefits for multifamily housing. And let's see, we need to educate the legislators of what it takes to manage a city because they just feel like they don't really understand. I guess we lost some of our homeless housing dollars was taken away. Is that correct? I believe.
It's associated with the county, the fees the county receives of the Shland Douglas homeless program.
You know, which is, which is too bad, really. And also, they made a comment about building codes from the state or creating a problem and additional expense for building housing. So anything we can do to lighten the load on our contractors needs to be done. And the codes are, codes are strong. There really, there's a lot there, so that's pretty much it.
Sound busy. Well, good luck, council member Ueher.
Yeah, I don't have any major updates. Definitely not anything with that stuff, thank goodness.
All right.
Oh, not the major Shland Douglas Community Action Council meeting was good. They, they are not getting as much grant money for food distribution as they have been. It's actually down quite a lot, but, but hopefully, they will be able to subsidize that from other, other things. So they're looking positive there. Oh, today, representing the city at the Flywheel Investment Conference. Really cool. A lot of talk about AI and how that is, will affect everything from a lot of agriculture to energy to everything, everything. But what was cool was they talked about how Washington state, because we have tech and the people who buy the tech and the places to manufacture the tech, like we could become the, the ag AI like capital of the country. So that was really exciting. But yeah, that's it.
WDA, we had a meeting. And if you walk down the downtown core, they have invested a lot in large pots and flowers and flower hanging. So the downtown is looking really nice right now. They're almost done doing all the planting. They're also looking at having additional funding down there. They're playing with the idea of approaching a parking and business improvement area or pitia. Iya, so, yeah. And so we'll see, see how that goes. They're just debating it. And then they got to reach out to the businesses and the building owners. So exciting stuff happening there. Link, we'll get some of our electric buses in. And by the end of the summer, the new bus garage will be ready to go in time for winter so they can keep them clean and dry and charge it up well. So exciting stuff happening for Link.
Great.
I attended the board retreat for the museum. And several of us, council member Navarro Gomez, council member Quavis, and myself were able to go on a tour of the museum. And you all are certainly encouraged to reach out to Mariah if you'd like to have that tour. Laura and I met with Mariah and one of their board members this week. And hopefully soon, we'll have a number to talk to you about in terms of, you know, the whole issue of what's our ongoing commitment financially to the museum. So if you'd like to hear more about that, I would encourage you to, to talk with Mariah. She's glad to arrange that tour. But yeah, hopefully, we'll have something to you here soon on that. So I think that's all I got.
Council member Atkinson just mentioned my biggest and greatest event, which I think is, I mean, it definitely will impact our city. Great work. I know as a parent, I see the value of our museum and all the wonderful community events that are brought to our community. So I think it's very important that we all kind of look into it and see what it is that we can do to either support or work with the city to see how we can move forward.
Can you give us, is there any update on the junior city council?
Yeah, we are really excited. We're slowly moving forward. We've been working closely with Laura Gloria. Tammy's helping us with our website. We're hoping. We're hoping to add a um additional link on our website where students will be able to go in and register and apply to be part of our Junior City Council. We've been doing some outreach. Charlie and I have been in communication with Wenatchee High School, West Side, Cascade Christian Academy, Core Christi Academy. And we're just um excited to start bringing in our youth and getting them connected to their community and civics. Anything you'd like to add, Charlie?
Yeah, and contacted um Dr. Kalahar Superintendent, so he's on board and supportive. And we'll come back um hopefully soon with um something for the council to adopt to make this official.
Can I ask a question? How are you going to choose your junior council members with it? Will it be a vote of the students or will it be by appointed?
There's an application process uh that gets submitted. Uh, the mayor gets to select, and the council uh confirms the selections. And um the idea would be to be representative of the community and the schools, um both private and public and homeschoolers. So that's, that's how we're starting out anyway, yeah.
I think it's such a great project.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, entertain, uh, oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I'll move to adjourn today's meeting.
Second. We have a first and a second to adjourn the meeting. Halls in favor?
Aye.
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 Alls opposed, motion carries. Thanks, everybody.